Call the December regular meeting of the Ellsworth City Council to order, December 18th, 2017. All are present except for the exception of Councilor Hudson this evening. First item, I'm sorry, second item, Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Item three, Rules of Order. We follow Robert's Rules of Order adopted at the annual meeting in November. And also at this time, if I could ask everyone, if you have a cellphone, pager, any electronic device, if you'd turn it off, turn it on mute, please. Thank you. Item four, Adoption of Minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council. November 9th, 2017, Special Council Meeting. November 13th, 2017, Organizational Meeting. November 20th, 2017, Regular Council Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, a second, we take them, but I'd like to include that we take them one at a time. We have one member that was not here during two meetings.
Okay.
Okay.
The November 9th, 2017, Special Council Meeting.
Move approval.
You asking for a vote?
Yes. All those, I'm sorry, all those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstained?
I was, I was, that one.
Thank you. The November 13th, 2017, Organizational Meeting.
Move approval. Oh, okay, you can do it all in the same motion, okay.
All those in favor? Unanimous. And November 20th, 2017, Regular Council Meeting. All those in favor? Unanimous.
That is more.
Item five, City Manager's Report.
Not a lot to report on tonight as we're going into the holiday mode in the city. People will be spending time with friends and family. But I do want to take the opportunity to thank our police, fire, dispatchers, Public Works Crew, the folks who plow our roads, who make it us able to enjoy that time, you know, as they keep our roads safe and protect the public. So Chief, Mozier, and as well as fire and Public Works, thank you for what you, what you will be doing over the holidays.
And along that same line, I'd like to add also a thank you to the Police Department for Saturday's replaying event, traffic control. Everything just went perfectly, smoothly. Everybody that I talked with appreciated the fact that they could walk in that road and, and be very safe, you know, getting to it and from it. So, thank you very much.
That was an amazing event.
It went well. It went very well. Item six, Committee Reports. Any member of the council been to any committees that they would like to report on, please? Councilor Moore.
Dylan and I went to the, I have a committee meeting. And it was very informative. One of the things that was kind of a surprise is that a couple of years ago, the harbor master put out a, sort of a can or something for donations. And this year, the donations amounted to $882.15, which is kind of interesting.
Wow.
The Harbor Commission has begun its discussions on the upcoming new budget. There's, for some reason, we seem to be talking about the budget earlier than, than normal. They are also reviewing the harbor ordinance and discussing changes. There's a, a potential need for a plan to use the entire system of the, of the river from the dam down to the mouth of the river. And in doing that, they need to define some of the terms, like what constitutes the inner harbor and the, and the potential outer harbor? What are the boundaries? And they also want to clarify some of the rules and regulations and maybe clarify some of the definitions. I was just going to read a little something here to give you an idea of, of what they were talking about. This is one about the inner and outer harbors. The, the harbors and waterways shall include the following. The harbor will be divided into an inner and outer harbor. The inner harbor beginning on the easterly side of the Union River, it tinkers wharf, so-called, by waterline, and proceeding thence northerly along the shore to the Union River Bridge. I won't read any further, but you get an idea of what it, what they're up against. Another topic of conversation that has been going on for some time has been the problem with non-compliance with our gas tanks, our gas tank down at the harbor. And this is a, a pretty serious thing. So, there's been a lot of talk over the last two or three years about what we can do to replace or at least fix the problem. And that's, seems to be on the verge of being totally resolved. Ask the city manager to, to speak about something called a ship grant.
Yep. Ship is Small Harbor Improvement Program. And the city, as the council knows, we had applied for ship funding to do the, the upgrade to the fuel system, not only replace the inadequate gasoline tanks that are there in distribution system, but add diesel to the mix so we could service diesel engines. Anyhow, the council has previously approved the match for that project. We have received a grant agreement from the Maine DOT, which was too late to get on tonight's council agenda, but we'll bring it to the next one. Meanwhile, that's given us the green light to get permits and, and do design. And the idea will be to do the project in the spring before summer voting season begins.
Councilor.
Could I follow with a quick question?
Certainly.
Do we know how much fuel we have in that tank?
Yes.
How much?
Less than a hundred gallons.
Okay. So they didn't fill up this fall in preparation?
No. And it, they're afraid that it's probably, that they hide, hide level of water in it.
Yep, good. I was just going to suggest that to fill up some of the ancillary vehicles around to get rid of it.
Yep.
If it was, so, thank you.
And one last thing. For those of you who've been down to the harbor in the last couple of years, you've probably noticed that a great deal of time and, and energy, and often that energy was in the form of volunteer workers, has gone into beautification and improving the usefulness of the harbor. For example, there's a, a nice garden down there that has done, a great deal of the work was done, I believe, with the Garden Club. And the harbor master's taken a great deal of pride in, in his nice flower garden. There's been a revitalization of the original gazebo. And I believe that was done in part as a Eagle Scout project. And it's a tremendous improvement. And that, that gazebo is used a lot down there. Anything from weddings to the Friday concerts and things like that. And there's also been a lot of work in creating the stone walkway that is made walking back, you know, throughout the place, very nice. Well, just recently, a new addition was made down there, and I, I just want to bring this up, and there's a couple of sheets that will come around so you can see what's happened. And on Saturday, November 18th, members of the Ellsworth Elks, led by Arthur Corliss, installed a seed of gazebo down at the northeast corner of the park. Actually, I guess it'd be northwest corner of the park. Mr. Corliss and the Elks wanted to do something for the community and decided on this project. And it took a little longer than they expected to actually get the kit here in Ellsworth. But in, in one day, the, they were able to put this thing together. And it really is a very nice-looking structure. And it's, helps to give some definition to that big grassy area where the old water treatment plant once stood. Anyway, if you have really good vision, you might be able to see it from, from legacy. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Councilor Fordy.
Recreation Commission met. Since then, the sound curtains at Court Number Two came down, thanks to some assistance from our Public Works Department. One morning, we had a window and we went up and did it. Ice gate rink is framed. If anybody has spare time, we need to get the snow out of the rink so we can let the grass underneath of it freeze, we can put the liner in. But it doesn't look like we've got very much good weather coming this weekend, up into the 40s and rain and some showers, so Mother Nature may take care of it. But it's going to be the focal point of our winter carnival in February, so we, we need to get working on a nice sheet. Other than that, things are going well. Watch your local news and our cable channel for updates on winter carnival. Letters went out for fireworks this week, or Saturday, Friday, somewhere in there. I received mine today. But donations for the fireworks, it's all done by public donation. That's it for me.
Has the date been set for the carnival?
You weren't supposed to ask that.
We were discussing whether it was the first or the second. I think we went to the second Saturday of February.
February 10th.
10th.
Thank you.
Eight days after Tammy leaves.
Just a coincidence. Thank you, Councilor. Is there anyone else? Item seven, Citizens' Comments. This is the point in the meeting where we invite anyone from the public to come up and speak to us on any item that is not on the agenda. Give you a few minutes and we'll hear you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Blackstone. I'm a member of the Ellsworth Garden Club, and I'm currently chairing the Green Plan Steering Committee, which was, the green planning process was initiated by the Garden Club almost a year ago in January. And so we're at the point where we're preparing a progress report for the year, one-year mark. Previous reports to council have, I think, highlighted our, the vision that came out of the public forum that we held on January 19th this year. It was clear from public input that they wanted us to create a plan that would lead Ellsworth to become a model green community. The input that we received at that forum, and then subsequently for a couple of months in written submissions, has led us to better define exactly what that mission is and how the deficient, the vision is defined. And over the last few months, leading up to April, we began to put together a steering committee which would take that vision forward and develop a plan that would realize, realize that vision. The steering committee has gradually evolved so that now we have 14 members, and it may evolve further. We're very happy to have the strong support of the city. Michelle Gagnon, who's a city planner, Gary Fortier has been a, a great help as a member of that committee. And we're also glad that our city manager also drops in pretty regularly to our meetings occasionally. So, the, the work of the steering committee is to coordinate the process and to set up subcommittees that will do the work of the planning. There are several focus areas that were identified in our written submissions and their, and our public consultations. And I've listed on the front page of this report, the committees, the subcommittees that are currently in progress have, have work which I'll just gloss in a few minutes on the second page. There are some subcommittees that are beginning to develop, and they'll begin their work in 2018. We didn't want to have too many subcommittees going all at the same time, so we've been ramping them up as we, as we move through the, the agenda of focus areas. Those yet to evolve are, have to do with sustainable shoreline preservation, public and private drinking water, waste management, recycling and composting, renewable energy and energy efficiency. And we are planning to deal with two topics, which are listed at the top of the second page, having to do with sustainable maintenance and sustainable development. We're going to deal with that, with the steering committee as a whole and across these subcommittees because these are topics that really all of the subcommittees have something to say about. The progress that has been made through, to date, has been to do with this, organizing this kind of work, and also doing small projects, which we're really concerned about doing to help educate the public and also engage the public. The understanding with this green plan is that we hope the city council will take, take on the implementation of that plan in, in large part, but that the city cannot become a model green community if the entire community does not embrace it and put their shoulder to the wheel, so to speak. The city council cannot do it alone. So, we've, the small projects and the business that we've been doing up to date is partly to engage the community. So, we have, to date, raised over $45,000 that will help us bring in consultants, do educational programming, and also hire a coordinator facilitator, who has just been hired and will begin in, in January. That person is Carol Martin. Some of you may have heard of her. The city of Ellsworth is a, a part of the small, small steps that we've taken. We're delighted that even before our steering committee met, the, that council voted to move to an organic lawn care company that we regard as an important small step forward for, for the green plan. Other work that has been done at the subcommittee level has included substantial work relating to the inventory and mapping through GIS and photographically of all of the green spaces, public green spaces in the city of Ellsworth. That amounts to 50 spaces. The subcommittee has visited each one of those individually and done a detailed benchmarking inventory of those spaces. The nature of those spaces is itemized under Point Four. Just to give you a sense of the diversity of the green spaces, Harbor Park, which was mentioned earlier, was one of those spaces that we spent quite a bit of time with. We've also just completed a walkability survey of the public in, in the community, and it's my hope that in February, you may be getting a more detailed report relating to that particular survey. It was a very, it had strong participation from the community, and the information that's come from that has been excellent. We also have a museum in the streets project that's moving forward through the Historic Preservation Commission and a grant application in the wings in order to realize that particular project. We've been developing strategic working relationships and partnerships along the way, and I've itemized some of the organizations that we've been working with. And of course, we're continuing a broad public consultation and educational program. The third and fourth pages are really a heads up to you to give you a sense of some, not all, of the programming that we're looking at in 2018, that we're planning. A lot of this has to do with educational programming, but some of it is more of a forum nature, such as Powering Our Future Summit, which is something that's being undertaken by Climate to Thrive on the Island, something that we'll be part of. There's also a festival that seems to be in the planning, proposed for May, focusing on our harbor, and potentially titled Eelsworth Union River Festival. Pun intended. We also have a very high-powered consultant coming in August to help us in working out the details of our green spaces and green plan. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to let you know a bit about what we have done in the past year and some of the things we're planning in the next year. And we will be back, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Just hold on for a second. Are there any questions from any of the councilors?
I have one for the manager, not Mary, but I'll wait on that.
One for Mary.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, is the Heart of Ellsworth going to be part of any of your plan or any of the coordination that you're, you're, you're working on?
Heart of our, Ellsworth has been a strong participant in our steering committee, and we hope Heart of Ellsworth will be part of several of our projects. They focused, they provided a forum for us to consult and present to the community earlier this year, so they've been strong supporters of this process.
Great, thank you.
Councilor?
Just a note to the city manager that on March 19th, Sophie Janeway from National Resource Council remains scheduled. That may be an afternoon you and I can double her trip up.
Yep.
Have a follow-up on our energy efficient processes we've been talking with her about, just.
Yep.
So she doesn't have to drive over twice in the middle of the legislative session.
Thank you very much. Very informative. Is there anyone else? Seeing no takers. Item eight, Presentation of Awards. I have nothing here.
I don't believe we have anything tonight, Mr. Chairman.
The Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless a council member saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. That being said, first item on the consent agenda. Council Order Number 121700 requests that the Deputy Treasurer-Tax Collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet, and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through the municipal quick claims deeds. Second item is Council Order Number 121701, Request of the City Assessor for Abatement of FY 2017 for $10.61, FY 2016 $99.12, and FY 2015 $92.12, taxes assessed to Trudy A. Martin, MUNUS ID number 355162, in the amount of $201.85 plus interest and fees. And the last item on the consent agenda is Council Order Number 121702, Request of the City Assessor for Abatement of FY 2017 $403.10, FY 2016 $403.56, taxes assessed to Terrence Pinkham, MUNUS ID number 5205, in the amount of $806.66 plus interest and fees. Are there any councilors that would like any of these items discussed separately?
Can we have a follow-up at the end if we pass the, with?
In the discussion? Certainly.
Okay.
Move the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion?
Is this the appropriate time for me to ask?
No discussion. No discussion on the consent agenda.
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Can you ask at the end of the meeting?
Yep. Item 12. Under New Business, Public Hearing in Action on the Following Applications for New and/or Renewal of the Following Licenses. Finelli's of Maine Incorporated, 12 Down East Highway, for renewal of a Class B license, Victular Liquor Arcade, and renewal of a state restaurant liquor license, malt and vinous. And I've been informed that there were no issues? I'll open the public hearing. If anyone has any comments or questions? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Move approval of Finelli's request, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Ellsworth CI LLC, DBA, as the Ellsworth Comfort Inn, 130 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging license. Open the public hearing. Any questions, comments? Close the hearing. Councilors?
Mr. Chairman, move approval for the request of Ellsworth CI to businesses of Ellsworth Comfort Inn for renewal of their city lodging license.
Motion in second. All those in favor? Item 13. Public Hearing in Action on an Extension to the Emergency Moratorium Ordinance on Primary Caregiver Operations Outside of the Primary Residence Upon the Request of the City Planner.
Mr. Chair, I'll be filling in for the city planner tonight. We are requesting an extension of the current moratorium for another 180 days. This moratorium, which was passed at the June 2017 council meeting, extends a moratorium on primary caregivers, that's as, as in marijuana caregivers, operating outside of their primary residence. This is part of a statewide issue where there are some caregivers within the state who appear to be positioning themselves to take advantage of the commercial opportunities associated with the legalization of marijuana. As you know, the caregiver portion of the Ma, the Main Medicinal Marijuana Act really focused around an almost benevolent cottage industry-type situation of where each caregiver could take on five people. And this is a statewide issue. This moratorium gives the city time to look at the licensing, land use, and regulatory issues associated with caregivers moving out of their primary residence and into commercial facilities and other facilities. We feel that we have made some progress, although at this point, it's unclear what is going to happen with the, the Maine Recreational Legalization Act of marijuana. And even though this is medicinal, it all ties in together and a part of a larger conversation. There have been some discussions in Augusta that I've heard that there may be major rule changes relating to caregivers, but we feel we need another 180 days to get our arms around the issue. I would note, though, that in November, the city held a, a community conversation on marijuana that was attended about, by about 50 local folks, and we had some great speakers. And clearly, there's more work to do on this, but we appreciate your support for extending this moratorium for another six months.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions? Councilor Fordy.
I'm going to support this, but, and it's not without a little trepidation, because I was one of the ones that clearly stated that we were going to get on this and get going. But I understand it's not our staff's fault that we've been sitting waiting, as usual, for Disgusta to... usual, for Disgusta to get their arms around this before we can craft what the city wants when we don't know what the state wants yet. So, that being said, I will support this, but not very happily.
This is the public hearing on this item. I'll open it. If anyone has any comments, questions, that they'd like to state? Seeing none? Close the public hearing. Counselors, is there any further discussion? Counselor Crossway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go on record, as I did in June, that I will support the moratorium, but only because I want to see this thing stalled as long as it can be. I'm more for an outright ban, and I'm going to continue to take that stance, but I will support the moratorium tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Counselors, has been a motion and a second? What would you like to do?
Vote.
Okay. All those in favor? Item 14. Council Order Number 1217...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we get in trouble, did you record a motion?
No, I did not.
I didn't think it was.
Okay. Nobody made the motion. You asked what we wanted to do, and I said, "I'd like to vote," but nobody made a motion yet. So I would move approval of the extension of the emergency moratorium.
I'll second it.
Now, I didn't want legalese to come get us.
That's why I'm going to ask you.
Shall we re-vote?
Yep.
All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous.
Just trying to yank you along.
My era.
Does that make it 12 months?
Yeah. Yeah, 12 to nothing.
We voted twice.
Item 14. Council Order 121703, request of the city manager for consideration on a resolution of support for the national park system.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Earlier in the fall, I was approached by a representative of the Pew Foundation and Kathy Summers-Grice. There's a national movement on to support the national park system in addressing the backlog of deferred maintenance within the park system, which I understand is somewhere in the neighborhood of $11 billion, given the fact that Elsworth certainly benefits from the national park as well as the host community bar harbor. We were approached about doing a resolution of support, which makes a lot of sense if you consider the estimated economic impact of Acadia National Park and the other national park assets in the state are $386 million, and much of that, of course, benefits Elsworth as a gateway to the park. Since that time and the original suggested resolution, the National Park Service put forth a proposal to double entry fees. They were not approaching us with a resolution of support to do it that way. They were asking us to encourage Congress to find a sustainable source of funding to address deferred maintenance. So in terms of the resolution, I've crafted it similar to what Bar Harbor passed on December 5th, which supports or encourages Congress to find a sustainable source of funding to address the need and reasonable fees, but doesn't support the current proposal, which according to numerous press accounts could double the entry fees into the park. This is a suggested resolution, obviously, however you would want to craft it, certainly change the language, but I think it's a reasonable approach to it. And I believe we have a representative from Friends of Acadia here tonight, Stephanie Clement, and she could certainly address any issues with you regarding the impact Acadia has on Hancock County and the entire state of Maine.
Ms. Clement, come to the podium, please, and state your name for the record, if you would, please.
Certainly. My name is Stephanie Clement, and I'm Conservation Director with Friends of Acadia, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight and to city manager Cole for presenting the resolution. And we just think that Elsworth is a natural fit for a resolution like this, given that you not only have tourism businesses here that receive business, but also I think of Elsworth as really the hub of economic activity for the whole county that is the primary place that we go to for plumbers, electricians, to support the tourism industry. So that's really why we're here tonight. And the Restore America's Parks Campaign, as city manager said, is all about trying to find multiple solutions to address the deferred maintenance backlog, which is at Acadia, 11.3 billion nationally and around 71 million here at Acadia, and funding for maintenance projects just hasn't kept up with the need, and so as a result, the Park Service every year has to defer maintenance on a variety of projects, which is what has created the problem. So this resolution would essentially serve as an affirmation that the city of Elsworth recognizes the importance of national parks as America's best idea, as a record of our natural and cultural history, and as economic generators, and as a legacy for future generations. And the resolution is geared towards encouraging Congress to create a liable source of funding for the maintenance backlog, and I would just add that our senators have been terrific on this subject. They are cosponsors of a bill that's currently working its way through Congress that would direct some of the unallocated offshore mineral resource revenues towards the deferred maintenance backlog. So that's an example of kind of a creative solution that this resolution is really aiming towards. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about Acadia's take on the situation or Friends of Acadia, and I just want to say that Kathy Summers-Grice, who would be here tonight, but she's home with the flu, so she apologized that she couldn't make it tonight.
Thank her for not coming.
Yes, I will.
And the weather.
Yes.
I had a couple of quick questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Thank you for coming up on such a slippery night. For the press and everybody else, are they still selling half-off passes in December at National Park, Bar Harbor, and Mount Desert?
Yes.
So if you want them for Christmas presents, great idea. Of course, I have a lifetime senior pass now, so I don't need to worry. My only concern is, is I haven't got the comfort level yet in formally opposing their current fee increase. I am fully supportive of the entire resolution until the last 12 words.
And certainly, the council could drop that phrase. I think my concern was that this resolution was more about finding a reasonable solution, and I didn't want it overtaken by the proposed doubling of fees. I would note that I believe the Banker Daily News, when they described the Bar Harbor vote, was that they had opposed the fee hike, and I don't, I think it was more about supporting the park and finding a solution. I just didn't want to send that message.
Yeah, I just am afraid of saying the negative message. Everything's positive up until, and I was wrong, it was the last 10 words.
Any other questions, councilors?
I would just ask one. Has the Secretary of the Interior been here and discussed this with park officials and so on?
He has not been here to Acadia. He was, of course, in the state looking at Katahdin Woods and Waters, but he focused primarily on that area. And this fee hike was definitely a national-level proposal that surprised our local park officials, very much so. So it is a national project.
Not to interrupt you, but that's exactly why I asked the question.
Yep.
So we get the concentration now on the Northern Monument, and we've got all this deferred maintenance, and I don't understand how they can move ahead on one project and let the other slide so badly, so... Just a personal comment.
Yep. I could give you my take on that, but I don't want to. That's probably not necessary.
Are you at liberty to tell us what part the Pew Charitable Trust has in this?
Yes.
I see their name's attached to it, and I think that's a good thing, but...
Yeah.
Just so the public knows.
Right. Pew has been, I would say, the primary funder of the campaign overall, and Kathy, who is the consultant here working in Maine, is funded through Pew, but Pew has been working through a variety of partners as well to kind of generate the grassroots support for this effort, and that includes everyone from the National Parks Conservation Association to Friends of Acadia. We support this as well, to various sportsmen's groups and so on at the national level. So it really is a broad-based campaign, too. The folks who are working on RVs and so on at the national level, Hospitality Association, so it's really a broad campaign that's supported by a lot of different groups, but Pew is the primary funder of the work that's being done behind it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A quick question myself. If Elsworth, as this reads, opposes the current fee proposal, in the grand scheme, what does that do or what doesn't it do?
Right. That's a good question. The public comment period is still open on the fee proposal, at least through this Friday, I believe, so it is something that could be submitted officially to the record as a statement about the fee proposal. Otherwise, I think that the intent with the Restore America's Parks Campaign is primarily to use the resolution passed here, the one in Bar Harbor, and so on, just to provide support to our congressional delegation and their actions in Congress and amongst their colleagues.
I'm just uncomfortable, not knowing the budget of Acadia, not knowing the budget of the federal government's contribution to it, just for me to just oppose carte blanche the increase. Maybe it's needed.
Right.
I don't know. I don't have any numbers. I don't have any information on that at all.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a question that everyone has been wrestling with. I think the part that Friends of Acadia has been most concerned about is that the magnitude of the hike is so large in comparison to where the fees have been at the park. We absolutely agree that fees should be part of the solution related to the deferred maintenance backlog, but we support a broader initiative, one that takes on everything from volunteerism, philanthropy on our part, like our contributions to the trails and carriage roads, to more congressional appropriations overall, and to bills such as the one that I mentioned that Senator Collins and Senator King have put forward as cosponsors. So I understand your concerns about, there is a need for more funding all around to support our national parks, and this effort is just trying to raise awareness about that. So the fees is a portion, it doesn't have to be in this, if you want to keep it purely related to the maintenance backlog, we don't need to refer to the fees at all.
Or Mr. Chair ended at reasonable fees and let people...
That was going to be part of my motion when I snuck it in there. And the reason, Mr. Chairman, is I reiterate again, that's a double negative. The entire resolution is positive, supportive of the park service, supportive of a long-term solution to the backlog, asking them to create a reliable, predictable stream, and then the last thing we say to them, they look at it, read it, and throw it in the trash because it's a negative.
I agree.
So when you're ready?
Is there an...
Quick question. What is the current entry fee at Acadia National Park?
It is, right now, it's $25 for a seven-day pass with your vehicle. The annual pass is $50, which is also with your vehicle.
Which is $25 until the end of the month.
That's right. The half-price sale is $25 right now. Then, there is a motorcycle fee right now. If you come in on a motorcycle, I believe it's $20 for a seven-day pass, and then if you're on foot or on bicycle, I believe it's $12.
And didn't they just boost last summer, the lifetime senior pass, up to 60?
Up to 80.
Eighty?
Yep, yep, and that was done...
I have it.
Yep.
Good.
So, yeah.
I'm just curious, what would the bike rate go up to under the new proposal?
The bike rate, I wrote that down here somewhere, 30, would go up to 30 on foot or bicycle.
For one day?
I believe that's a seven-day, and that is, this is only during the busy season, what the Department of the Interior called the busy season, which would be June basically through the end of October. So May and April, it would be the same prices that we have now.
But, Mr. Chairman, you could go down before the end of the month and get a $25 seasonal pass and go to Acadia every day.
That's right.
I think the people that are asking probably qualify for the lifetime anyways, so...
Most of us do, yeah.
I have one more question. Is there any value to adding the rest of the congressional delegation to this pressure, or is it simply going to come out of the Senate and stay there?
Oh, no, absolutely. There's a House companion bill as well, so we would love to have Representative Poliquin on board, so we could say that he's our leftover target for that particular bill. My understanding is that Representative Pingree, as a member of the Appropriations Committee, is less likely to sign on to bills such as this one, but...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Is there a motion? Mr. Fordyear.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the resolve in support of the national park system as presented with one alteration, and that being the last paragraph that states, "Be it further resolved, that the city of Elsworth, Maine recognizes that entry fees to enter selected national parks are a significant revenue source and supports reasonable fee increases." Period. Strike the rest of it.
Been motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, does the clerk have a place to send that signed document when we're done with it?
Probably to Kathy. I will have to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'll send it to Kathy.
You got it? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17. Council Order Number 121705.
Fifteen.
I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. Well, sorry, chief.
Maybe he knew.
Item 15...
Mr. Chairman, were you checking with the clerk to see if the votes have been taken?
Oh, no. Okay. On...
Not that he's ragging you.
Counsel, it's only my second time. You know, it's... Item 15. Council Order Number 121704. Request of the city manager for consideration on the Hancock County Maine Hazard Mitigation Plan 2018 Update Resolution.
Okay. The Hancock County EMS Director, Andrew Sankey, contacted us. Every six years, the county does an update of its hazard mitigation plan, the last one being in 2012, and they're asking for a resolution of support from the council updating the hazard mitigation plan 2018 update resolution. I have gone through the plan. There are a list of projects in there, mostly dealing with public works and drainage management. The projects are scaling up culverts for the most part. One project was completed in the six-year period on Beachland Road. There are five that remain to be done and are subject to finding funding. I would note, though, even though it was not among the listed projects in 2012, the council did support with matching funds from the state of Maine, the New Box Culvert on Davis Brook down on Shore Road, which is certainly making a major improvement in that watershed. The city also has invested with matching funds from the state of Maine into the upgraded drainage pipe that goes from the intersection of Forest and State Street down to Leonard Lake, so we have made some investments and some progress. There are more projects that remain, need to be done, but there's no obligation on the city's part to do these projects. but there's no obligation on the city's part to do these projects. But I do think it's helpful in the future for seeking additional grants, such as the four-stated grants that the city has received, like Davis Brook, to be in part of an official plan. So I'm recommending that the council adopt the attached resolution adopting the 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan for Hancock County.
Counselors, any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we accept the recommendation of the city manager to enter into the Hancock County Maine Hazard Mitigation Plan 2018 update resolution and affix appropriate signatures as they pertain to this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 16, Public Hearing in Action on Proposed Amendments to Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5 Sewer Ordinance. Mr. Harris.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm here tonight because we have a couple of things that I would like to look at with the ordinance. One of them, that's all one thing, really. I have a section of the ordinance, Article 11, that says that the city shall not take septicage. That was an overlook when we built the new plant. The plant was built to accept septicage and has been accepting septicage. That was put in for the old plant that was not capable of taking septicage. And so therefore, we put it in there that we couldn't take it. So I would like to remove that current Article 11 that says we cannot take septicage. And I'd like to replace it with a new Article 11. And the new Article 11 pertains to a special exemption, a special exception to the ordinance, which gives the superintendent with the concurrence of the city manager and any other people that he thought might need to have input on it to be able to make an exception for a project if circumstances warrant that they not necessarily subscribe to the letter of the law on a section of the ordinance.
Question. Counselor Moore?
If you strike Article 11, you still need to use the term "exception." Is it otherwise stated somewhere else in the ordinance?
We do not have a provision for a special exception in the ordinance now. It's an added, it's a new, a new section of the ordinance. Since we are going to remove Article 11, rather than having to renumber the whole ordinance, I simply ask to take Article 11 and, I guess, change it from the no-septic allowed policy to the special exception.
Just rewrite it.
Just there, yeah.
But I would note that one issue has nothing to do with the other.
Just using the vehicle.
Yeah, just using that number in the ordinance. It'll be a different...
And...
Yes, sir.
Just, Mr. Harris, in terms of this exception, we're looking at situations where, under the ordinance, there's no room for making an exception now, which, you know, puts, kind of puts you and the city in a straitjacket. So this, and again, the language talks about no adverse impact to the city and that it otherwise doesn't violate the letter of spirit of other parts of the ordinance.
Or other city ordinances.
Right. So it would give some flexibility. And I would also note that city planner, Gagman, who works in ordinance development, worked with the superintendent on crafting the language.
Just, when I read it, well, over the weekend and again tonight, it sounds like more a housekeeping item.
For the most part, yeah.
Counselor Crossway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Harris, has it been, has the language been vetted by the attorney? I mean, are we, this is ordinance stuff, so we want to make sure it's meeting legal muster.
I do not have any, no, simple answer, no. So we can have a condition.
We can certainly provide the language to the attorney, and as long as there's no material changes to it, if he needs to change the language, take a look at that. So it's the intent that we're after tonight? Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Fordyear?
Been here a long time, and ordinance, following the ordinance has been pretty sacrilegious if you try to break it. Fireworks, I was adamant that we weren't going to have the police department look the other way and not enforce the fire department, I mean, the fireworks ordinance on Bayside Road just because one family had bought all their fireworks already. I think that there isn't a project coming to Ellsworth that can't wait for the next city council meeting to approve the change. He can go through his fact-finding, submit that for approval. I just have a problem allowing, and no disrespect at all, a department head and the city manager to agree to violate ordinance. Well, violate design criteria. It just...
You would have it presented at next month's meeting?
Well, I think there's one project that you're working on right now. This would help. And we've talked about that in finance committee, so we're well aware of what it's doing and the reason for this change. I don't see why that isn't a perfect way to vet it. Get your findings of fact, submit them, let us look at them. If we have a problem, oh, wait a minute, let's take it to a council meeting. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Counselors, any other questions or comments?
Just a procedural question. If we had, if we were to do what Counselor Fordyear is suggesting, if we were to table this at present, have we already had the public hearing? Because if we haven't, we could have a public hearing since it's been advertised and then table the action.
You're correct.
Just a suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor?
So, Mr. Harris, in terms of delaying it, what, a minute ago you said that this was more procedural. So what is the...
So basically, to give you an example so that everybody's on the same page, when this came up, one of the reasons this came up is because there's a section in the ordinance that basically says that every person, every building, shall have its own separate sewer, okay? And you cannot tie into another person's sewer. So where that comes into play for me is we have a project that was originally intended and built partially. They built half the project. They built the infrastructure to connect the second half of the project that was going to be done in the future. And then it wasn't done. The owner of the project decided to sell the back half of the project to somebody else. So now that it's a second owner and not the same owner, they want to tie into the front that was built for them, the sewer that was built for them that goes through the front sewer. Now, if you took the ordinance out, common sense, there's no reason why they wouldn't be able to tie. It was built for them to tie into that pipe. The only reason that I'm not allowing them to tie into that pipe is because the ordinance tells me that they, unless they have no other alternative, can't tie into another person's sewer. So what the alternative for me would be, if we had this exception, would be to say, okay, if you're going to tie into the sewer in front of you and they agree, then you guys have to, one, take away the city's liability if there's a problem with that line. That'd be one of the conditions. Two, agree that you can't build further back in the property without coming back for another approval because I don't want 70 more places being built and us not having control of that much sewer. And then, three, have a maintenance agreement with the people in front of them that should there be a problem with it, they both agree that they're on the hook for fixing the pipe. So it doesn't violate the intent of the ordinance in my mind because we're making sure that the city's protected. We're making sure that there is a plan in place for if there is an issue with that line that both parties have agreed to. And satisfies the common sense of having them be able to tie into something that was built for them to tie into and not spending thousands of dollars to try and put their own sewer in, out through the property and out through the road, to have a separate connection on High Street. You're going to have to dig up the road and get into that sewer pipe. It just, to me, that's, that's, it's going to kill that project, probably. They probably will not do the project if they have to put that sewer line in. And to me, I don't know that that's, and that's up to you guys. I mean, this is your call. But I don't know that that's a good reason for us not to allow a developer to be able to create a project here in Ellsworth. So that's what I'm asking for. That's the full disclosure. I have no latitude to say, as a superintendent, let's do that. And so, and I'm not sure I understand, Gary, are you saying that you would prefer on a case-by-case basis that people would come here if they wanted to accept, have a variance from the ordinance or something?
I would like at least the findings of fact that you develop to be run by us.
Okay.
Since it is one of our ordinances that we're trying to enforce, and I've sworn on a stack of bibles to uphold the ordinances of the City of Ellsworth. So I just, I agree, this project is an outlier. This is designed, is perfect. Yes, we should let them do it. I'm worried about the next one.
Right, exactly. I agree with you.
So, Mr. Chair, if the council were to adopt this language with Counselor Fordyear's suggestion that it come back to the council for approval, then if you adopted this tonight, we could bring it back at, say, the January meeting with a finding of fact and concurrence of the council. Does that make sense?
I would suggest that if you take the first sentence in concurrence with the city council, may grant a special exception. Send it to the attorney and we'll finalize it next month. Because I think the attorney's probably going to tell you, in order to do this, you have to have a public hearing because you're, I don't know, it ought to go to them to make sure we're okay. But my intent is not to hold up this project. I think it's a great project. I'd love to see it go. I want to make sure the city's butt isn't hanging out in the cold snow when the next person comes along and says, well, you did it for them.
Yeah, no, I'm on board with you. I just, that's why I tried to craft it so that we protect...
Yep, I know.
Would like to pass that into a motion.
You know what I would like? So a simple motion to table, to submit to the, I would move that we get the devil from the South Portland MMA rep because it's supposed to be delay, postpone action, but that's okay. I would move to table this ordinance, no, I withdraw my, I withdraw my motion. We should have a public hearing, as Bob said, to get the public hearing over with. So I would delay my, since the motion to table is under table.
I'll ask you a question first. If he's going to make a motion, could we also, at least tonight, remove the no-septicage, we can't take septicage piece from the ordinance tonight?
Breaking the law.
Yeah, you can't, you can't combine that with a tabling motion.
That's what, yeah, so...
I'll open the public hearing on this. If there are any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Moves to approve the amending of the City of Ellsworth Chapter 5 Sewer Ordinance to remove Article 11 as currently written. End of motion.
Second. Been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table the replacement of the current, I mean, the former Article 10 with the new Article 11, excuse me, Article 11, special exceptions until it's reviewed by the city attorney.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No discussion on the table.
I'm sorry. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item 17, Council Order Number 121705. Request of the police chief to approve the Regional Communications Center Third Shift Dispatch Services Agreement between the Hancock County Commissioners and the City of Ellsworth.
Evening, gentlemen.
Chief.
I believe you have in front of you, you should have, a copy of the updated contract with the Hancock County RCC for the upcoming year of 2018, done on a calendar year basis. The contract is an extension of what we've been working on, or working with over the last year, a little over a year, actually. It's been successful. We've had a meeting, I had a meeting on the 4th of December with myself and the fire chief, Renee, and also Scott Atkins. And we discussed some minor issues that we've encountered over the year. Renee is the former director. She's since stepped down, and they're in the process of trying to find a new director. Scott Atkins is currently facilitating that search and also acting as the director of the RCC currently. We expressed some concern that we've had over the year with some service interruptions, if you will, or errors that have been made. And he was very receptive. And I think, I certainly speak for myself, but also the fire chief didn't walk away from that meeting with any concerns about going forward with the agreement. There is a slight increase from the previous year. And I was, that was brought forward as a reflection of cost of their increase for their dispatchers in their current contract. So that's...
Counselors, questions? Hearing none? Is there a motion?
I'm just not going to make them all tonight. You sure? Yep.
Hang with us, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agreement between the City of Ellsworth Maine and the Hancock County Commissioners for Regional Communications Center Third Dispatch, Third Shift Dispatching Services as presented.
Second.
I will note that that small increase is a 6% increase, which is, in my estimation, is not a small increase. But I will also say that, given the cost, reflection for the... for the upcoming year, it's still a lot cheaper than what we could do it for ourselves, so to me, it's a, it's very much-
Special if we had to fill that midnight shift with high-level police officers-
Right.
-on dime and a half.
That equals the county tax increase.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item eighteen, council order number one-two-one-seven-zero-six, request of the city manager to hire an additional police officer in preparation for an upcoming retirement.
So-
Want a motion? Are you gonna make him sit there and talk about it?
I'll make it short. We, we've been notified of upcoming retirement for one of our longstanding officers, and we were in the process of preparing a young man for a reserve officer position. And so, essentially, what I'm asking the council to approve is for us to offer that young man a full-time position, so that we can send him to the academy, which starts on the second week of January, the Maine Criminal Justice Academy, and, which would put us ahead of the curve as far as the retirement, the pending retirement. The young man would graduate from the academy in May, and with an approximately twelve-to-sixteen-week field training officer period, we'd have him potentially on the road by late July or August, which would leave us just a few months short as far as staffing goes for patrol. The alternative is, we wait until the retirement, which is slated for May, and begin the hiring process, and at that point, the student academy class would be August, and we, then, he would then graduate, he or she would then graduate in December, which would considerably increase the amount of time where we'd, we'd be short a patrol officer on the road. And as you are well aware, all of those shortages are covered with overtime, which becomes extremely expensive. So, this is an effort to try and curb some of that and get somebody ready as quickly as we can to fill that vacancy.
Thank you. Questions?
I think it's a great move.
I agree.
Motion.
Move to authorize the city manager to hire an additional police officer in preparation for, in advance of an upcoming retirement.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Good plan.
Item nineteen, executive session to discuss labor contracts in accordance with MRSA Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section four-zero-five, Paragraph six-D. And I would also add, city council, assistant, city councilor Moat being- City manager. Did I say councilor?
Yeah.
City manager, sorry. Do we get a motion?
No.
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanim-